Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 11, 2024, meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I could ask everyone to take a moment. Please silence their cell phones, and please note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'll start off by introducing members of the board, starting at the audience's left and moving to the right, as Jerry Pachamas, he's an associate member, Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member, Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morris, I'm currently serving as chair, Suzanne Murphy, who is our clerk, Scott Peterson, who is our vice-chair, and Tony Perucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town's zoning bylaws, and reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants in the public, and to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read from the public announcement for the hearing, and then read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project, and can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or to ask a specific question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. Any member of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium, please stand, state your name and address for the record, please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. Once a hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board shall then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, and make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decisions may be appealed, as provided for by Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17. First item up on this evening's agenda is public comment. This particular public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a comment on anything that is not on tonight's We've had a request to take one hearing out of order, that's going to be 02224 Barnstable County Agricultural Society. Is there a motion to take that out of order?
Second.
Do you want a second? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so first up will be 02224 Barnstable County Agricultural Society Incorporated, 1220 Nathan S Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow non-agricultural events with associated parking and parking for a fee.
Good evening, thank you.
We have to read a few things into the file, sorry.
I'm going to read it in just this. Barnstable County Agricultural Society Inc., 1220 Nathan S Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, applies to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 6.1, 240 14.11, 240-51F, and 2451B of the Code of Falmouth to allow non-agricultural events with associated parking and parking for a fee. The subject property is 1220 Nathan S Ellis Highway, East Falmouth.
Any new referrals?
Nothing new in the board.
For the applicant, good evening.
Hi, I'm Wendy Brown, general manager, here on behalf of the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, seeking my annual permit to hold non-agricultural events and paid parking during the fair.
Anything else you'd like us to know?
Really, I don't think there's any new events this year. I've got the thing from the water department, I've contacted them, as far as temporary water, I guess there's a new person in charge there, so he wasn't quite sure how we operate, so that's all set. Same thing with the health department, I don't think I've heard from anybody else.
Any questions from the board? Start with you, Tony.
None, thank you.
That was a nice aerial photo that you had in your package.
Oh, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Any complaints from abutters or neighbors that we should be aware of?
We haven't since we got rid of the drive-in.
That's all the question I have at this point. Mark?
None.
Right?
I'm satisfied, no comments.
Public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application for a special permit? Board discussion.
Good project.
Yeah, good project.
Motion to close?
Motion to close. I give that to Jerry, is that a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is that with conditions?
With conditions.
Oh, modify it, with the previous conditions?
Yes.
Of previous years?
Second. That's allowed, yeah.
Findings? Noreen, do we have to incorporate our, I mean, the board's made lengthy previous findings in the previous years, so why don't we just reincorporate them all? Addition, no opposition to the renewed special permit. Conditions, same previous conditions, seems to be working without a problem. Do you need to add anything else?
Just one correction.
Yes.
I think I made a motion, I wasn't supposed to, because I'm not a voting member.
Tell them I'd like to, uh, well, why don't we just...
Ratify it. I move to ratify the motion. Okay.
Alright, to the record, Mr. Duffy making the motion. Any additional findings or conditions? Anything, Noreen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a vote, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Alright, next up will be continuation of 01624 Sharma, 15 Dillon's Way, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to convert the existing detached pool house into an accessory apartment. And, have we opened this one? This is, yes, we need to open.
Have we opened?
Thank you.
We already opened.
Had we opened? No, we hadn't opened.
Oh, we did not, I thought we did.
No, we're getting a, we're getting a no.
Alright, let's open then. We have an application from Vishrut Sharma, hope I said that correctly, 15 Dillon's Way, East Falmouth, Mass., applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240 6.1B of the Code of Falmouth to convert the existing detached pool house into an accessory apartment. The subject property is 15 Dillon's Way, East Falmouth. And let's see what we have from boards. Board of Health. The existing house is labeled with four bedrooms, and the property has a four-bedroom septic system. After looking at the main house second-floor plan, Health would not consider the main home to contain four bedrooms under the Title V definitions of a bedroom. The second and third bedrooms don't have sufficient privacy, as one might pass through either one of those rooms to get to room labeled number four. Therefore, the additional bedroom proposed in the ACC dwelling is considered the fourth bedroom, and the property has a suitability-sized four-bedroom septic system. No IA technology will be required, since this is not an increase in flow. That's Board of Health. Buildings-only comment is, the site plan shows this as a proposed pool house, not an AD unit. Water, 15 Dillon's Way applicant will need to fill out a water service application at the DPW, and provide a site plan with the application, showing the location of the service line from the water main to the foundation of the home. Planning, this applicant has filed a site plan review application with the planning office, they filed on January 29th this year. Engineering. Oh, no, that's a site plan, sorry. We have the site plan here. Nothing from them. Fire Department, no comment. Concom, no comment. Don't know who that is, no comment. I must have something from engineering there. And then we have the planning board decision. And no letters.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name, for the record, is Anthony Tsakalos, and I'm an attorney at Amen Klauer LLP, which is a law firm here in town. With me tonight is Kevin Klauer, who's another attorney at the firm. I'm before you tonight, representing Vishrut Sharma, who's the owner of 15 Dillon's Way, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. Mr. Sharma is applying for a special permit pursuant to 240 6.1B of the zoning bylaw to allow for an accessory apartment in the AGA district to be located in an existing detached secondary structure in the rear yard of the lot. The project has obtained site plan review by the planning board, which decision was just issued on April 8th, and you have a copy of that decision. I'm hoping that you guys have the updated site plan, which is the one that's on the screen here. The old one that we applied to the planning board with contained a notation, "proposed pool house" on the ADU. We've revised it to say it's an existing accessory proposed ADU, existing house. The prior site plan was, you know, stamped before the buildings were constructed. So this is the site plan that we should be working off, and this is the site plan that the planning board had approved. The lot's located in East Falmouth and sits near the southeastern end of Dillon's Way on a cul-de-sac. Dillon's Way is located off of the Timothy Bourne Cartway, not far from Route 28, East Falmouth Highway. The lot's just over half an acre in size, approximately 24,600 square feet in area. As mentioned, it is zoned AGA, it's also in the Wacoit Bay Coastal Pond overlay, Natural Resource Protection, NHESP core habitat, and a foraging area, too, wildlife corridor. Presently, the, there's a 2,719 square foot, single-family principal dwelling on the lot, containing three bedrooms, and an attached two-garage. Also on the lot is a 796 square foot detached structure, originally intended to be a pool house, located in the southeasterly portion of the lot. I'd like to note that the applicant still intends on constructing a pool, there's not a pool in the open space behind the house and to the west of the accessory dwelling unit. The owner is proposing to locate a one-bedroom accessory apartment within the pool house structure, which at 796 square feet will be 36% of the principal dwelling. The proposed accessory apartment is a modest structure of similar appearance and construction with the primary dwelling. There's no impact of, from this project, on conservation. It's outside their jurisdiction. The project's in line with the zoning requirements, resulting lot coverage by structures will remain 14.6%, where 20% is allowed by right. Lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will be 27.4%, where 40% is allowed, which is far below the allowable thresholds. The project meets all the requirements for an ADU. The lot's more than 7,500 square feet. Principal dwelling is owner-occupied. Only one bedroom is proposed in the ADU, where two are allowed. The ADU is 796 square feet, which is 36% of the square footage, as previously mentioned. I believe the bylaw allows for up to 800 square feet, or 40% of the square footage of the structure. The ADU meets the architectural design standards set forth in the bylaw. It's a very similar construction and appearance with the principal dwelling. Parking for the ADU is shown on the plan. And, I believe the board can and should approve this project, and I'd be happy to address any questions that the board has at this time.
Questions from the board, start with you, Jerry.
Nothing, I just found the ADU parking, which is way off on the left.
It is, it's on the driveway, it's about as close as we can get to the ADU.
I don't think it's within our jurisdiction.
Yep.
And although you mentioned it, we're not commenting on visibility of the pool with this approval at this point.
Sure.
If we vote.
Right?
No, no questions.
No, I'm good. The only thing I noticed was the parking, and everything else is fine. Already occupied, for that matter. By me.
Just again, for clarification, on the application page three of the application, you have existing coverage numbers at 13 and 20.8, but then, in, when we're looking at the site plan, the site plan is 14.6 and 27.4. Just want clarification that the site plan is accurate.
Yes, this revised site plan is accurate. This was the one that was most recently submitted and approved. This is, these are the numbers that we should be going off of.
Okay.
Tony?
I'll just couple of quick questions, is, are either the main house or the ADU going to be rented?
To my knowledge, no, neither.
So there'll be no rentals whatsoever?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions?
One minor one. What's BH mean?
BH?
Yeah, low right-hand corner. It's not hash-marked, it's...
Oh, I think, I believe it's a bulkhead.
Bulkhead?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a crawl space, there's not a full basement on the ADU. Yeah.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Public comment. Seeing none. Board discussion. Tony?
None.
I'm all set?
I'm all set.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Fineran.
Second.
Second.
Scott.
Scott?
All, Scott.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, hearings closed, no more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
To approve, with conditions.
Alright. Findings?
Findings, let's see, it's a 240 6.1B, it's an AGA zoning, it's for, it has a foraging, it's in the Wacoit Bay Coastal Pond, it's not in the flood zone. Structure, we're going with 14.6 over 27.4. Um...
Four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms. Height is 19.
It's four bedrooms with the ADU.
That's correct.
Not to exceed four bedrooms, total of four bedrooms.
Total, right.
We can just put in the findings, that the health department indicated that the plan is acceptable to them due to a reduction in interior bedrooms, no privacy.
Yep.
The ADU will be the fourth bedroom. Both structures are currently existing. Site plan review is provided, along with the decision from the planning board. Existing is 3208 square foot, inclusive of the pool structure, inclusive of the pool house, in terms of structures, you've got the percentages. Lot is suitable for the proposed use, no objections or comments in favor or opposition at the hearing. Anything else for findings?
We did have one, from the building inspector, that said it needs to be, it needs to say ADU on the plan.
Yes, yep.
That would be...
It does, they changed, they changed it.
Yeah, they changed, yep.
They did change, okay.
Condition that anyway. Any additional findings? Conditions?
No rental?
Not used as short-term rentals, or rentals, remain four bedrooms, incorporate the water comments, the planning decision.
They have to post the address as 15A?
Additional finding, the lot densities is by right, so if they want, they don't need to come back to us for a supplemental permit if they want a pool, as long as they don't put an Olympic pool.
Clarification?
Yep.
In fact, I might have just went through my brain, because the ADU can technically be rented, but they're not renting it, correct? I mean, that's what he testified.
Testimony was that it's not going to be rented.
Yeah, okay. But they have, but they have a right to rent it.
Correct, correct.
So it's no, it's no short-term rent?
Yes, correct, short-term, no short-term rental.
Okay, less than 30 days, so, alright.
Comply with the ADU by law.
I like that.
Let's not reinvent the wheel. Any else?
The water department requested a new service application to have the water shown on the plan. And the address is technically to be assigned by engineering?
Yep. Mark, Scott's one of them, so, anything else?
None, I think that's it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a vote, thank you.
Great, thank you for your time, everybody.
Next up, we have new hearings. First up this evening is 01824 Driscoll, 463 Shorewood Drive, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to demolish and rebuild a portion of the existing garage with additional habitable space above increasing lot coverage by structures.
Okay, we have Robert M. and Tracy L. Driscoll of 18, I mean, 187 Monroe Street, Dedham, Mass., applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240 10-2A and 240 11-3A4 of the Zoning Board of Appeals to demolish and rebuild a portion of the existing garage with additional habitable space above increasing lot coverage by structures. The subject property is 463 Shorewood Drive in East Falmouth. Now let's see what we have from town boards. From building, we have nothing. Assessors, no comment. Water, he has attached comments that will come. The existing dwelling has a 3/4-inch copper water service, it is recommended to upgrade the existing line to a 1-inch. Fire Department, no comment. Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights-of-way and public utilities. Shorewood Drive is a private right-of-way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights-of-way. Four, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or any other stormwater infiltration measure, or stormwater harvesting measures such as rain barrels for the new roof area at a minimum. Five, where there is a small, where this is a small lot, the proposed work is close to abutting properties. With the existing fencing, proposed work area location, and lot grades, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, "Construction activity shall not cause erosion, two, or sedimentation into abutting properties or town right-of-way," end quote. That was engineering, concom, no comment. This is from Health. Property has three existing bedrooms per plan and the assessors card. The proposed modifications show three bedrooms and an office that will no longer be private via a case opening. Therefore, no issues with Health. That's what we have.
Any letters?
No letters.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Kevin Klauer, and I am before you tonight, representing Mark and Tracy Driscoll, the owners of 463 Shorewood Drive. Mr. Driscoll is here with us this evening. We are seeking permission, we being the royal we, seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling on this site by expanding the existing garage and the addition of habitable space on the second floor above that garage. So 463 Shorewood Drive is located in Great Harbors. It's, as you know, a dense residential, largely seasonal neighborhood. Lots of similar houses and lots, this particular lot is 10,000 square feet. It is in the residential B zoning district, and it is not located in the flood zone. Presently, there is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of 2,179 square feet. It's non-conforming to front yard setback, it's 23.4 feet, where 25 is required, and it's non-conforming to lot coverage by structures at 21.79%, where 20% is allowed by right, and up to 25% by special permit. The applicants are proposing a modest addition, it's an expansion of the existing garage area, which will allow for alterations to the existing interior space, and the addition of a bedroom above the garage, which is to be accessed from the interior of the home. The existing ridge height here is 14 feet 6 inches, the proposed ridge height of the addition is 21 feet, which is still well below the 35 feet that is allowed by right. The applicant's proposal does not increase the existing setbacks, does not impact the existing setbacks, rather, there is a slight increase to lot coverage by structure at 83 square feet, so the resulting lot coverage by structure percentage is 22.62, again, well within the allowable range, and with the issuance of a special permit would eliminate that as a nonconformity. There's no increase to the number of bedrooms, as they're converting an existing bedroom to an office with a case opening, which was okayed by the health department, as was noted in referrals. However, due to the existing nonconformities, this does require a special permit under Section 240 10.2 and 240 11.3A4, formerly 243C and 240 69E. Under 240 10.2A, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240 12.1E, and whether or not that alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there is no new, there is no new nonconformity created, the existing nonconforming setback is unaffected, and there's no change to the views and vistas, this does very much conform to the neighborhood. The requirements under this provision are similar to those under 240 11.3A4, which, in the residential C zoning district, allows for lot coverage by structure to exceed 20% by special permit. In that situation, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, the impacts on views and vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embayments. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet, looking at 30 nearby properties. This is clearly in line with surrounding homes, and is in character with the neighborhood. While there is an increase in ridge height, it's relatively modest in scope, and at 21, as mentioned, will be well below the 35 allowed, there should be no impact, negative impact on views and vistas or shadow. One quick note with, relative to the referral from the water department, we did submit an email from Matt Lannan at the water department, which noted that the applicant is not necessarily required to upgrade the water service, it's a recommendation, not a requirement, but because of the location of the porch would be actually quite difficult. So the applicant had extensive conversations with Mr. Lannan about that, and that email was submitted to the file. This project, as proposed, represents an improvement for the owners, it adds a useful habitable space, and is by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's no new dimensional nonconformity, there's no change to the existing nonconforming setback. The lot coverage by structure, though increased, is eliminated as a nonconformity with the issuance of a special permit. Further, this meets the requirements of 240 10.2A and 240 12.1E. I believe that you can grant the special permit, and I would be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
Board questions, Tony?
I mean, I think the addition fits in well with the neighborhood, but just more curiosity, anything else? Those existing stairs that are going to the second floor, those are existing, they there now?
So, no, those stairs are going in, this is, this is what's going in, there is no second floor to speak of right now, so the second floor will only be this proposed addition area.
Thank you.
But the stairs are inside the home, is what I was trying to indicate there.
No more, no questions.
Just again, to confirm, three bedrooms and the new ridge height's 21 feet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Kevin, when I looked at the old special permit from 17, the conditions were you were not to come any, you were 25 feet to the road. And it's not 25 feet to the road.
So, I don't know how that was measured at the time, but the 23-foot, 23.4 is to the step, oftentimes if the step is like a landscaping step, it's not included in the setback, it depends as who's doing, really depends who's doing the, the plan. So, the porch itself, I suspect, is in fact 25 feet, but the step, which is shown, is 23 feet 4 inches. So the landscaping step isn't necessarily attached to the home, so it's not part of the structure.
So you'll remove it?
I think they prefer to have a step up, it's a, you know, it's a landscaping element, and they're not coming, they're not coming, the, the structure itself is going to remain at 27 feet 7 inches to the garage, they're not making any changes at the proposed porch.
It was a condition.
But it's not part of the structure, so it's, 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 I understand what you're saying, but I think what we're showing here is the setback to the step, which is not necessarily integrated into the home.
Is there anything in the minutes for this decision?
I just have the exact, the decision...
There's a copy of the decision, yeah, in the back?
Yeah, right here, yeah. I don't see the minutes of the, of the decision.
Is the decision explicit as to this point?
Yeah. Definitely.
Should be in the back of the folder.
Of this one?
Yeah, should have the oldest, oldest...
No, I have the decision right here, he was asking for the minutes. Yeah, it shall not extend into the 25-foot setback to the front property line off Shorewood Drive.
So the, the structure itself does not, the porch...
The porch shall not extend.
The porch does not, the step, there's a granite landscaping step. So, if it was to be removed, they'd need to regrade that whole area, which could be done, but it seems unnecessary, because it's, it's just a granite step onto the, onto but it seems unnecessary because it's, it's just a, it's a granite step into, onto the, onto the porch.
It's just set there.
Yes. It's not part of the structure itself.
I think he's correct.
I'm sorry.
May I comment on that?
Of course.
The measurement from the front of the step, or what I think is the front of the step, is 23.4 feet. The distance between the step and the porch is 1.1. So that makes it, what, 24.5? So I guess it all works. Well, it all works within half a foot.
It's good to have math people up here.
The banker.
The banker.
Mark, questions?
No, no, that wasn't the only thing, and it's a loose step, so.
Frank?
Uh, no, no further questions.
No questions.
Public comment? No public comment. Uh, board discussion. The project?
I have no comment.
I think going forward, because this is not the first time, I think, the issue about whether a landscaping step is going to be considered. So I think going forward, uh, making sure that a decision is very clear about what we're going to consider would be helpful, so we don't get into a situation again. I was concerned.
Attached is part of the.
The new front porch and, let me read the sentence though. "The new front porch and, and/or any step attached to the porch shall not extend into the 25-foot setback."
But it's not attached.
All right, but I guess what I would say to you is, separate from attached or not, it is part of, it's integral to the house, because the other question is, can you get in without it? In most cases, you need steps to get in your house. So regardless of what the material is that it's made of, whether it's physically attached to the house or not, you typically still need your steps.
So my suggestion going forward is that in a decision, the board make it very clear that it include whether it's.
Attached.
Attached, landscape, or otherwise, so that an applicant.
Required features should not be referred to as landscaping.
It is all in the language of the decisions. I mean, I, I, for the board's justification, to share a humorous story. When my parents bought their house on Hudson Street in 78, there was a detached, quote-unquote, detached Gabriel garage that was illegal. And there was a land court case said, no, it's actually attached under the ZBA's language because the owner had nailed a four-by-four into the side of the house and ran it all the way back to the garage. It's all in how we write the decision, so.
But I, I think attached is in some language that I read. I could be wrong, but, and this.
I mean, this is pretty explicit.
Yeah, but it.
I don't disagree, and I was very concerned about it, but.
But it's not an attached.
Right, but just understand, if you have an elevated home, for example, somebody's not going to jump in and out of their house. They need steps. So the fact that the steps are attached to the dwelling or not is sort of incidental because you still need them mostly to get in and out of a dwelling. So I think it's just something to think about.
To your point, we've had the discussion before. We should probably get to a conclusion on attached or not. Is it still part of the, the measurement component?
We could say something like, uh, notwithstanding the previous special permit, so that it's get put to bed for this decision.
Well, I think the issue, well, why don't we add this to a future agenda item, come up with a definitive interpretation for the benefit of future applicants, but, um, getting back to. Are you satisfied or do you still have, okay? Anyone satisfied?
I'm just, sure, I remember reading that somewhere. The attached part makes it part of the structure, and if it's not attached, hence your.
Your land court decision. Do you have any concerns of the project? Frank?
No.
Jerry?
No.
All right. Your motion to close?
So moved.
And we have a second?
A second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're closed. No more testimony to be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve the conditions.
Motion to approve the conditions. Is there a second? Second, it's, uh, findings.
Findings, uh, it's in an RB zone, uh, green pond overlay, no flood. One previous decision in 17 that we have talked about. Lot size is 10,000 square feet. It's on a private road. Oh, it's a 240-10.2A and a 240-11.3A4. Proposed is 22.62 over 30.67. Correct me anytime, Kevin.
No, that was right.
You know how I am. Height is 21. What else do I have in here? No, that's, that's it. No letters either.
There was a lot comparison sheet submitted. It is in keeping with the neighborhood. No increase in bedroom, uh, no visual, no impact on the neighborhood, no impact on nitrogen flow or loading, no increase in bedroom count. Board of Health has indicated the septic, uh, septic system is suitable. There is correspondence in the file regarding the discussions between the applicant and the water department. Any additional findings? Uh, no one, no opposition at the hearing?
Offices have cased openings.
Offices have cased openings. Additional findings? Jerry, Frank? Good. Conditions?
All, all, uh, town boards?
Okay.
I just want to clarify that, Ms. Murphy, because typically when we say that, we incorporate any recommendation they made, but they're not going to be required to replace the water main.
No, it says recommend on the, on the water.
Well, let's, let's have some discussion about that. Is the board satisfied that the water service, or does the board want to require an upgrade?
I would say we require the upgrade.
I'd leave it up to the water department, their expertise, right?
I think it's a new rule that you're not, they're not allowed to make them or something, isn't it?
Well, I think, I think the way the water department looks at this is that they're recommending everybody have a one-inch, and if somebody has a three-quarter, then they may say, hey, we have sufficient water pressure. And then the water super has said, we're not specifically going to require you. We just request it, so.
They're not upgrading, they're not increasing the, the bedrooms. So theoretically, they're not using any more water. And also, you're better off with a copper line than a plastic line every time.
Did I hear there was a hardship if they needed to put it in?
It's under, it runs underneath the exist, the porch that was built in 2017, so they need to basically tear off the porch and to put in a new water line.
Frank, did you want to say something?
And a step.
No, I'm all set.
And detach that step while you're at it.
It is detached.
Another issue as to whether or not we want to, I mean, I, my, I'm always happy to, in hardship circumstances, not to, but at the same time, when there's a town requesting something, it's not, there's usually a reason.
Well, I think the water super has provided some flexibility here. Like, they've requested it, but they haven't required it. So I guess I would defer to their position.
And that was going to be my suggestion. Why don't we pump this back to the water department? But going forward, we might want to decide whether or not.
They should decide that. It's one inch, to your point, Jerry, I agree. I'll tell you, the water department's better now than it's been in a very long time. And Matt and Mike have got their game together, and I'm not going to second-guess them.
Condition it as, we'll defer to the water department as to whether or not they're going to. The water department may, not shall, may require an upgrade, and their discretion. Remain three bedrooms, standard hours of work. Anything else?
All right.
They did, uh, engineering did request to have a drywell added to the plan?
Yes. Not for corporate engineering comments.
Or rain garden.
Or rain garden.
Yeah, we can, we can have, uh, BSS update this plan as part of the building permit application. Give the copy to the zoning board.
But, you know, something, when they said that, that there needs to be a drywell, are they talking about at all corners of the house, all downspouts, one place?
So.
Anywhere where the construction.
The engineering department views changes versus new homes is they ask you to accommodate for any new roof area. So where they're going up, they would consider that little section to be new roof area. So while it's ideal to do the whole house, we typically only ask people to do any changes because that's what would generate potentially a change in stormwater runoff.
Good point.
So it's a little bit more timed or.
Doesn't make any sense to me because runoff is runoff, but that's what the rules are, that's what the rules are.
Any additional conditions?
I'm good.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, that's a vote.
Thank you all very much, but we appreciate your time.
Uh, next up on our new hearings, we have 01924 Netto, 614 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a tow truck operation with vehicle storage.
Okay, we have Luis Netto, 614 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of feels, appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 246-3B of the code of, code of Falmouth to allow a tow truck operation with vehicle storage. The subject property is 614 East Falmouth Highway in East Falmouth. Let's see what we have from town boards. Fire department has no issues. The assessors have no issues. Building department. Site, we have a new site plan though, right? Is that what you just gave me?
I didn't give it any.
We have an old site plan for the property. What we have in the current file was just a section of that site plan that we had photocopy. So we did, there's not a new site plan. So the building department looked at the section of the old plan that was highlighted for this proposal.
I'll read what he said anyway. Site plan submitted is insufficient and lacking. Proper delineation, special permit from 12, from nine, uh, 2012, currently not in compliance, the cars are in the front, and proposed use is partially on abutting properties. That's from the building department. And we have from engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. East Falmouth Highway is the state right-of-way in this area. Any alterations within the right-of-way will require permission from Mass DOT. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to pub, public property, abuddies, or rights of way. Two, there are two distinct structures on this site. Rocky's Gym appears to use 610 East Falmouth Highway. And this building that we're talking about now appears to use 614 East Falmouth Highway. Only 614 East Falmouth Highway is in the town's system. The current address apology is, policy is each lot is assigned a street number, and further division within the lots are assigned a secondary address. Please have the lot owner contact engineering to clear up the addresses on this lot. We defer to any, we defer to the board if this should be cleared up before any decision is made or if a condition can be made for approval. Three, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence, affixing the legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. Four, note that no site work is shown on the submitted sketch. That was from engineering. Concom, not in their jurisdiction. And that's what I have, and no letters.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm Rocky Rodriguez, um, on Rocky's Gym. I'm representing Luis. I did get a letter from Scott that basically came down and separated. There was something to do with the six, I'm 610, he's 614. We've been doing cars there for many, many years as, um, Luis has been renting from us for my family, so in Rock Realty Trusts for over 10 years. She has Falmouth Auto 7, which is a used car business. I used to have Cape Cod Auto Salvage, which was the same type of business where we had tow trucks and whatnot. The reason why he's looking to do a tow truck is because the fact that most of the cars that he repairs, a lot of the people don't have AAA, so there's no way for the cars to get to his shop to be repaired. Number one, number two, the, the property is fenced in, and the cars cannot be seen from 28. Going into the property, my gym is totally to the left of his property with two different entrances. I have my own entrance, he has his own entrance. As far as you saying that the property wasn't, the, the addresses were not corrected, I, Scott came to the gym with this paper, if you want, guys want to see it. And, and basically, it was something to do with the 610 and 614 all being part of one parcel. Of course, that's crazy. So he came down and physically gave him that, separating the 614 and the 610.
You want to speak at the mic, so you're going to speak into one of these things?
We'll take this, we'll put it in the file.
You have this one?
Thank you.
Yeah, just hold on. As far as, um, the cars being there, uh, they've been there for probably, uh, 50 years. So this is really nothing new as far, like I said, it's just the, you know, the towing part of it that he's trying to get with this, with this one particular truck. Towing his vehicle, and I believe he contacted, he's been in touch with the Falmouth Police as far as possibly doing some towing for the town, for the, for police toes. But as far as I know, it's basically for, right now, for private customers for repair work.
Questions on the board, Jerry?
Could you repeat what the building department said, something on private property?
He's encroaching on himself.
Good interpretation, I guess.
I don't see how it really matters.
Well, no, no, I.
No, I can read it.
So we, we think because there was a line drawn on the plan for the area that was going to be used for the new tow truck, that maybe the building department thought that that line that we had used to circle the area was actually outside the property line. I think they misunderstood what was being used.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
They just kind of made a big circle into the ball.
And I think that, that circle to show the locus, the line of it went outside the lot line, so it appeared as though more.
He owns both lots, I mean.
The other part he did say though is that, that currently, according to the old, uh, special permit, currently not in compliance because the cars are in the front.
That was the cars that, I believe, um, same thing that, uh, for sale.
Jesse Torres had that place for.
Nine years.
Thirty years.
Exactly.
It was always the same.
It's never changed. It's, it's basically been since my dad had it.
So I guess also as part of that, one of the various special permits that was granted did allow, um, some cars to be placed out in front.
Yeah, I'm looking at that. Three during the day and seven out back. So total of 10.
Right.
Correct.
So I think the idea that there can't be any cars out in front, that piece was already allowed.
Hard to sell a car when it's out back behind a fast.
And that, you know, for this new proposal, those vehicles and the tow truck will be in back.
Look, I'm talking about the repair, the cars that need to be repaired. They pull in and, um, put them basically behind the building.
And how many new cars are you adding?
Pardon me?
How many new cars are going to be added to the property?
Well, there's not really anything going to be added, uh, as far as cars out front. It, this is, this is basically, he wants to use the towing for repairs. Like, somebody breaks down, instead of, like I said, the AAA has been an issue because people, some people can't afford AAA, so he would use the, his tow truck, his ramp truck or whatever, to pick up the vehicle to.
You're still putting the cars there now. It's just, they get towed by somebody else and you want to tow them yourself.
Yeah, basically, yeah, I, I.
I'm very.
She said new cars, I, I don't know what you mean. I mean, this is, this is for repairs.
Well, he is increasing though. It says in the application, we would like to, we would like to use the space we have out back of the building to do towing operation and store few cars. And it says 12 to 15 total. So there is an increase in cars.
Right. As far as, yeah.
You know, I'm just reading what.
No, I got you. I asked them the same question, but they, these would be for repairs and depending on the town, uh, police toes, if that, you know, happens or what. As far as that's concerned right now, that hasn't been a.
Is the repair going to be outdoors?
No, they go in the shop, there is a shop.
Are there gas traps and stuff in there?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's been, it's been.
Forever.
We've had this, this repair shop in here. I'm kind of old, I'm not going to tell you though, but anyway, since my dad, uh, yeah, yeah. Since we had an auto salvage junk, we had a junkyard there when I was five.
Burned himself like.
Right.
50 years ago.
I mean, that, that building's been there, Cape Cod, was Cape Cod Auto Salvage now. Luis has been there for over 10 years with no issues. We don't, I mean, there's no, hasn't been any problems, any fires, anything crazy going on there at all.
And effectively, storing cars out back since.
Forever.
God was a guppy.
I mean, you know.
I am.
You know. Well, longer than I've been alive, that's for sure, so what's that tell you?
Frank, any questions?
Yeah, I, um, I think I, I find the building commissioner's comment about the site plan being insufficient to be correct. Looking at it and taking the information out of the application that there, there might be 12 or 15 additional cars here. We have a plan which has the cars drawn in free hand on a plan that has no dimensions. And there are 14, allegedly 14 cars there in a tow truck. But how do we know they fit there?
Did you drive out?
Yes, I went out and I visited the place, and I find it's kind of congested. I don't have any problem with the use of this property for car repairs. And I actually don't have a problem with it for towing because I think that's probably an accessory use. use through car repairs that's approvable. But I just find the information that we have here, I'm unable to make a, an intelligent decision about whether or not what he's requesting is appropriate. Um, and if, if, there's also a special permit here which allows the sale of ten cars, and if we take twelve or fifteen more, that could be twenty-five cars. That's really maxing out this property. Um, the second point that the building commissioner makes that gives me some concern is that he's alleging or saying there's currently non-compliance with previously existing special permits. I have concerns about voting a special permit when there's non-compliance with existing ones.
Do we know what the, was that?
So I think the unfortunate circumstance, though, was that we didn't have any specification on what specifically was out of compliance. Um, you know, it did seem to indicate that there were cars parked out in front, but a prior permit allowed for cars to be parked out in front, so I think there's some confusion there.
Could we ask him to clarify? Continue the, just.
I think we need to have a confirmation from the building commissioner that there's compliance with existing special permits before we go forward and vote on another special permit. That's just my feeling.
Mark, Philly's questions?
Um, I, I'm, maybe I'm too familiar with the place, but I mean, jeez, there was a time when there was a hundred cars there.
I, I don't, I don't know, you said you went down there and you looked, Frank, that, that it's congested? I mean, from, from, you're talking about from the beginning of that building to the back of that building?
Down there and I walked around the property, I parked out back, I looked around. You've got racks of tires there, which is, is taking up some of the space you're going to be using for car parking. Um, you have some kind of a.
I would imagine some of that would be removed.
Kind of a container there from, looks like it came off a ship.
Shipping container.
Um, and it just seems kind of, I would like to know that what you plan to do, you can do. That's really what I'm.
I would, I would, I would think honestly, though, it comes sense that if he was planning on towing and putting more cars there, then things, junk metal or whatever would, would be, would be removed to put cars there. I mean, that's.
I understand, but if you're asking for twelve or fifteen, what, what do we say?
What, what do you suggest?
I'm not suggesting anything because you're the applicant, sir. I'm, all right.
Is the shipping container going to stay there, Rocky? I mean, that's fifty feet.
I mean, I, I didn't know what he was doing with that. I mean, it needs to be removed, I'm sure that it would be removed. I think the things that we're picking on or, or, or talking about, I'm very mind a tire racks and things of that nature, I mean, we could wheel the tire racks out in front, for that matter. I mean, I, I don't think there's, I know there's a, a plenty of room there because I was born there, so I know what's there, and there's plenty of room for twenty-five cars easily. I mean, if we, if we had to remove certain things like a, a bed door, a couch or a chair, I mean, that to me just seems, you know, uh.
I mean, I used to drive.
Crazy, I mean, you, you know the property market, I mean, I could put fifty cars there if I wanted to, I mean, if it really, if I had to.
I used to drive a wrecker, and, um, I mean, I drove out back there and I saw, I know, I wouldn't have any trouble parking fifteen cars there.
Easy.
Um, and.
I thought the point was, we just want the building commissioner to confirm whether it's in non-compliance with the previous.
Why don't we figure, let's finish with board questions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean.
Public comment, and then we can have discussion about whether we want to proceed or not. Give me questions.
On, on, on the application, it says at, have twelve to fifteen cars in total, it says the word total. Is that including the ten or are you adding twelve to fifteen?
Yeah, that would be including what it's, what's there now. I mean.
Fifteen total. Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah. And you got to figure, these cars, there's four, one, two, three, four bays in this place. So, I mean, and, and he says he's pretty busy, so you're probably going to have ten cars that are actually outside at one time. The rest of them are going to be inside being repaired, I would hope. So, uh, and there's plenty of room for, for that, believe me.
Well, I guess that was confusing to me, then, because I thought it was the ten that were for sale.
Already there.
Plus an additional fifteen.
No, it was, it was a total.
That's what I thought, too. But it does have the word total in there in front.
I don't know how he, I'm, like I said, I'm representing him, so I don't know, if he is Brazilian and I'm not killing him, but he doesn't, maybe understand.
Might be in trouble.
No, but to Frank's point, when you look at the site plan, somebody hand drew in.
Right.
All of these additional parking area, and when you do go to the back, you have the garage, you have that, that fifty-foot shipping container, there's obviously a bunch of.
Yeah, I mean, if that needs to be, I mean, and I would think, you know, for towing or, I mean, because you're towing people's car, and if it does, something down the road does happen with the police or whatever like that, I mean, I know that hasn't been suggested yet, but even people's, their cars bringing them in there, you're going to have to keep them safe and you can't be parking them up against metal containers. I mean, it would have to be removed.
But an increase in five is different than an increase in fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay. No more questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and I, and I absolutely believe in using common sense. Common sense right now tells me that I'm looking at this plan that you gave us, and I'm looking at fourteen would be cars and a tow truck. I have no clue how big the cars are or the tow truck, but I can see that they wouldn't all fit in the parking areas that are on this plan that was someplace scaled back at some date, I don't know when. But to make an informed decision on this, I think this board has to see a scaled plan, uh, showing where all those cars are going to fit, because you've got fourteen, you've got fourteen little boxes here, and you can't fit them in that.
When, when was that planned?
This is the one.
That's the one he just admitted just now?
So, I, I agree with Frank, uh, we need to see a better plan. Now, the other thing, too, is.
Let me see it. Rocky, do you want to see it?
Pardon me?
See the plan?
That's just a section.
Yeah.
From the larger plan, which is in the former file.
But in any, in any event, it is not a scaled plan, and I don't know what those cars, those cars are smaller than Volkswagen when they're drawn that way.
All small cars.
So, I think we need, I agree with Frank, we need a better plan. The other thing, too, is, um, I want to make sure I'm clear on the number of cars. When you look at special permit sixty-three dash twelve of two thousand and twelve, it's talking about ten used automobiles, all of which would be used to, I guess it sounds like selling automobiles. You're going to add another, or he wants to add another five. Am I correct, is that what I heard? Five. So you're asking, you're asking to bump up what was approved in two thousand and twelve, which had ten, and I'm not clear on that in the application. I'd like to see that clarified so that it can be conditioned. The other thing, too, I think I heard, and we're in a very sensitive wetlands area here. Number eight in the special permit sixty-three dash two of two thousand and twelve, paragraph eight says, "All storm water runoff shall be contained on site." That's not unusual. My question, and I think, and I'll come back to my question, I think you said that Concom said there's no jurisdiction here?
No jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Shocked to myself.
Yeah, this plan says, the one that had been scaled, that we have a piece of, it says seventy-two feet foot edge of bog, and when you look at the GIS map, you're in the hundred-foot buffer zone. Now, because it's a sensitive area, and because you're supposed to contain all water runoff on site, I don't have a plan to look at that, I understand how you're doing that, number one, or how you're maintaining it, siltation basin, so the wide.
Gas basins there, yeah.
But I'm not sure where it is right now, and I'm not sure how you're maintaining it. I mean, these cars can be leaking oil, gasoline, everything, and you're, according to the GIS map, in this old plan, you appear to be in a one-hundred-foot buffer zone. So I don't understand why Concom did not have a jurisdiction here. Um, did you ever file for a notice of applicability at any time? A notice of applicability asks Concom whether or not they have jurisdiction. We sent this questionnaire, not questionnaire, but this notice to them about the hearing, but nobody has filed a notice of applicability or a notice of intent to be doing something within the hundred-foot buffer zone. So, let me just sum this up. My concern is, I, I can't tell from this plan, not scaled. I think you need a plan. I don't know what you're doing about keeping all the stormwater runoff, which could carry gasoline, water, diesel fuel into this sensitive wetlands area. I don't know how you're maintaining it, and that's my concern. I need to have clarity on that if I were to go along with this.
Any other board questions?
So you want him to basically?
The site plan.
Site plan?
One other point, he, he mentioned that they want to do police toes, which, that's fine, but in a police tow situation, you have a compound that has to be enclosed, and it has to be available, you have to be able to get your car out even at two o'clock in the morning, don't you?
Yes.
So that's a little different than towing cars that you're going to repair.
I'll tell him.
Sorry, go ahead.
I said, I'll tell, I'll tell him. I mean, like I said, I'm representing him. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here, but I'll just tell him to get a site plan and, um, come back and, um, when else, whatever he needs to.
Can we give, give him some guidance as to what we're looking for?
Is there any public comment? Anyone in the public care to comment on this application?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Board discussion, we can give some input and so on. Frank, for Mark, Mark?
I, I saw enough room there within the gated area.
Yeah.
I mean, and I just look at it as, knowing that it's no different than the use has been for Christ, fifty years.
At least. I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't know why.
Maybe a drone photo would have done better than this.
Yeah.
Hand sketch to lay it out, but like, I drove in there, and I mean, it's, there's certainly no problem fitting what you're asking, I know, but, you know, beyond that, it's.
The use isn't, but doesn't bother me at all, but I think we should hold applicants to the same standard of submitting plans that we.
Absolutely.
Can see, uh, detail that we, that comply with zoning, and we can, we can then condition it appropriately. Based on the information we have right now, I'm flying blind.
So I agree with Frank, I think this is absolutely conditionable, this is, it's an ancillary use of what's been there, but I would like to just see the, an updated site plan, just so that we can condition appropriately. I, I'm, I'm a yes, but I would just want to make sure that we can.
Wanted to get an updated site plan?
Oh, the other is, that would give you time, I think a brief continuation would also give you time to resolve, that we can get, uh, the numbering issue resolved, you'd sign, have the building inspector sign off on that.
Anybody ever talking, Rocky, about paving the area? Because it's not paved, you have a catch base in there.
There, there is, uh, it was paved up to the building.
Yeah, to the edge of the building is paved.
Yeah, through, like, from the road to inside the gate.
Right. But looking at the tire rack.
And then there's stone, and then there's stone.
Yeah, the tire rack all the way up to the shipping container, where you have the catch basin in front of the dumpster is, is all just dirt.
Yeah, so you like to see?
I, yeah.
I guess you would have to be a site plan.
I don't want to get out over my skis here, but kind of to Frank's earlier point, if these things have been some sort of an accident and you park it outside.
If you get rid of all that, the tires, get rid of the tank, and fine, get a new, updated site plan and less cars, maybe.
And, and. Brian's end, and you've got to.
Yeah.
With regard to containing, uh, water on site, there's a, there's a drain right there, well, you know that.
Yeah, right, right.
You just mentioned that there's a siltation basin, but that has to be, I'm not sure I see it here on this, but it should be noted on the new site plan. Uh, there should be a caption as to how you are maintaining that. Again, this is a hundred-foot buffer, I don't understand Concom not wanting to look at this, but they didn't. Uh, but in any event, you need to contain the water on site. So, a site plan showing where that drain is, how you're containing it on site, that goes back to two thousand and twelve, paragraph eight, and that's not on this plan at all here, so.
All right. The other, I think, request is, can we get specifics from the building inspector with the non-compliance is?
Yes, absolutely.
And that we're looking at fifteen total cars, right?
And then we can just do this?
Yeah. He's got, I think that's going to be resolved between now and the next time.
Okay. I'll just leave this in here then.
So I think we're looking at a continuation. How much time do you think you need to?
Um, I know he'll be back, I believe, the end of April, so maybe mid-May?
Mid-May.
Early May, mid-May.
I think we're going to definitely be in the May.
Huh?
I think we're going into May.
Yeah.
So Rocky, your, your gym is six-ten.
Correct.
Okay, because.
That's what we had to straighten out because it was, I, I, I don't know what happened, but they had like six-fourteen, six-ten together, so Scott came down.
No.
Uh, and we cleared, as far as I know, we cleared it up.
The application is.
Again.
This one still says.
I haven't had any issues.
The one that you handed me, Rocky, says they're both six-ten now.
Aye, aye.
So that has to be fixed, too.
They're not, they're not stacked separately, it's all one.
Yeah.
One lock.
One entity, yeah.
Just a number.
It's just a number thing. Like he said, put a number one on the building or, or something.
Maybe you should be six-ten A or something.
Six-ten A, six-ten one, six, yeah.
But, um, I mean, Brian's pretty finicky, handy.
Yeah.
And he's never given you any indication that.
Never, we've never had a problem with the bog, never, any.
Yeah, and, and he would know.
Well, Brian's there all the time. Believe me, he would be honest. Um, even when we had it before, when we had the junkyard. I mean, what, what could be worse than a junkyard?
Do you have a date minoring?
So, we have a pretty heavy schedule, um, but we're looking at potentially June sixth, and what I'm thinking is then in the meanwhile, maybe you or you with the other fellow can come into the office and we can talk about.
Yeah, I think that's good to bring Louise in.
And try and get it squared away.
And find out exactly what needs to be done. Like I said, I, I didn't look at the plan because I just called me and just said, can you come today? So, I mean, I'm the little different kind of guy when it comes to things I need to do, but I'm, I just tried to do him a favor. But, um, I will def, I think that's the best idea, I think bring him in and explain to him exactly what needs to be done, and we can get ready for June. Or I can help him, or you can help him.
So what was the date?
Uh, June sixth.
Yeah, Ma can help. June sixth. If you want me to give this up.
Yeah, it just goes in the folder.
And when I bring him in, where should I bring him?
This will all be there when you can just meet with her and.
Come up to the zoning board?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll bring him up when he comes back.
Upstairs in the penthouse.
That'll work.
June sixth.
So is there a motion to continue to June sixth?
Motion.
Scott.
Second.
Suzanne is the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, continue to June sixth. All right, next up on our new hearings, we have zero-two-zero-two-four Harrington, twenty-three Cuddy Sock Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
We're doing Cuddy Sock, right?
Yes.
All right, let's do it. All right, let's do it. We have Dennis and Andrea Harrington, 9 Carriage Hill Drive, Weathersfield, Connecticut. Apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-113A4 of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures. The subject property is 23 Cuddy Salk Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Let's see what we have from town departments. From the water department, they have attached referrals. The existing water service will need to be upgraded to a 1-inch. Presently, the existing water line is 3/4-inch copper, 1966. The water meter will also need to be installed inside the home, not in a crawl space. Building department has no comment. Health department, the existing home appears to contain four bedrooms. The proposed plan shows four bedrooms with a bonus room that meets Title V's definition of a bedroom. We suggest opening the room to a hallway to eliminate privacy sufficient to be used as a bedroom. The applicant shows a partial design for a four-bedroom septic system that appears to meet Title V space-wise. I think that's the first, I think he has two referrals in here. Planning has no comment. Fire department has no issues. Assessor has no comment. Then we have engineering. The application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Cuddy Salk Road is a private right-of-way in this area. The plan includes a note that a driveway permit will be required. This is not correct. A driveway permit will not be required since this is a private right-of-way. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public properties or butters or public rights away. Four, dry wells are shown for the roof as we typically recommend. Five, we recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence. Six, erosion controls are shown on the plan and appear to be adequate to protect abutting properties and right-of-way. We recommend the following condition, quotations. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. Reference, reference to the Department of Public Work Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals who will be the permitting authority. That was engineering. And we have a ConCom decision, I think, that was approved.
Let's back it over.
Let's back it up here, that's right. There's a determin of applicability in here anyway. Conservation approved the above referenced project under a request for determination of applicability. The plan of reference is attached, the permit is not yet available. Um, no comment there. And here's, back to the health. This is updated. The proposal shows a partial four-bedroom septic design location, mainly does not appear to meet title setbacks. Shows four bed, health doesn't have any issues with this project. And I think that's what all I have. No letters, and that's it.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Poloney. I'm an attorney with Sentine Associates in Brewster, Mass. I am here on behalf of Andrea and Dennis Harrington. Dennis is here in the audience. They are applying under section 240-113A, section four, for permission under a special permit to exceed 20% lot coverage. This lot sits in the RB district, so it's appropriate for this application. It's shown as lot 297 on the site plan, and it, the lot area is 11,250 square feet. The current lot coverage is 13.8, and we're proposing to increase the lot coverage up to 22.6. So, this proposal is to raise the existing structure, which is a single-story dwelling, and resituate the foundation as shown, so that it'll sit a little bit better on the lot, and rebuild with a two-story structure. The existing deck and patio are all going to be removed, and there's going to be a new proposed porch patio on the back and a new covered porch that's proposed in the front. All of the new structure meets the requirements of, for setbacks. So, here you can see renderings of the proposed dwelling. There's going to be a two-car garage on the side and the porch there in the back. Here's the inside, the first floor plan. Shows the bedroom and the living room and the passageway into the two-car garage. I think this was an area where we had an issue with the board of health considering one of the rooms a bedroom, so we've addressed that through revised plans. Here's the second floor above, which has the three additional bedrooms and, well, no, there's the bonus room. The casings have been adjusted to make sure that that doesn't count as a bedroom. We've also submitted a worksheet that shows that this property fits within the context of the neighborhood. There are a few other two-story dwellings, and it matches the lot coverage appropriate to the other dwellings in the neighborhood. Actually, it's kitty cornered, a short road drive, and I think you understand the context of the neighborhood that's out there. There should be no impacts from shading, and because there's no change in the bedrooms, there's no impacts from nitrogen. I believe it fits all the criteria under the bylaw, and we ask you that you approve this project.
What questions? Start with you, Tony.
I, I think it fits in well. It's a definite improvement and to the neighborhood, so I have no questions.
Scott?
Just confirmatory, no setback impacts. The ridge height, just trying to look at, it's 28 feet 4 inches?
Um, I, I thought it said 26, but I...
It's hard to read.
It's hard to read.
I got 28 when I did it, but I'm bad at this, so...
28, 4.
That's what I had, 28, 4, yeah.
28, 4. Four bedrooms, as you mentioned, we need to open up the room, okay. The septic design was for a four-bedroom. I guess I wish it didn't say appears that it fits the Title V, but fine, this is a great upgrade, obviously, so, no further questions. Thank you.
Jeff? I have no questions. Mark?
No, it's not the same neighborhood it was 30 years ago, but that's the trend. It's a nice house, nice job.
Frank?
I'm satisfied.
Jerry?
No comment.
Public comment? Board discussion?
I think it's a good project.
Agreed.
I agree, good project.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions. Scott, second, Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, let's see, we're in an RB zone, overlay Great Pond, AE 12 for the flood zone. Lot size is 11,250. It's on a private road. Existing now is 13.8 over, I think, 18.6. Proposed is 22.6 over 22.8. I had my height at 28.4. We do have a comm sheet. It's a 240-113A4. I think that's all I have. No letters, four bedrooms.
Quests to raise and reconstruct. The new proposed structure will be a significant improvement, not adversely affecting the neighborhood. Improvements would include the scratch energy code compliance. The plan indicates dry wells are in place, there is a ConCom decision in the file. Correspondence from the board of health concerning the fourth bedrooms has been resolved. They've had a testimony that's in the file indicates the one bedroom or what was, could be considered a bedroom is being opened up with cased openings, and health is satisfied. Any other findings? Conditions?
ConCom, engineering.
Per revised plans with cased openings.
Hours of work?
Remain, hours of work, ConCom, remain four bedrooms. Yep, upgrade the water service. Engineering comments, including posting of address. Any other conditions? All right, anything else?
So, I think just maintaining the maximum four bedrooms, and then perhaps in the findings also, they're removing a paved driveway and installing stone to have a more pervious area.
Put that as a finding.
I didn't see that yet.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have 021-24 Clements, 1305 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a detached barn exceeding 900 square feet in size with lot coverage by structures over 20%.
We have Michael D. Clements, 1305 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-61B and 240-113A4 of the Code of Falmouth to construct a detached barn exceeding 900 square feet in size with lot coverage by structures over 20%. Subject property is 1305 Sandwich Road. Let's see what we have from the water department. If the approved barn requires water, it will need an independent water service from the water main into the barn. Please come to the DPW to fill out a water service application. Planning has no comment. Fire department has no issues. Assessors have no issues. Building department has no issues. Rolling along here. Engineering. Hold on, I'm going to turn it up. Let's see. Engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Sandwich Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way will require us filing a special, requiring, require filing a permit with the engineering division. See note below regarding abandoned driveway. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters or public rights ways. Four, a dry well is proposed for the roof as we recommend. Five, where this is a small lot and the proposed work is close to abutting properties, with the proposed work area location and lot raised, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, construction activity shall not cause erosion to or sedimentation into the abutting properties or town right-of-way, end of quotation. Six, there is a post-emeral fence on site that is not shown on the plans. It isn't clear if the fence is located on the property or in the right-of-way. We defer to the board if this information should be added to the plans. Seven, not shown on the submitted plan is a second driveway that was abandoned without proper restoration. FPWR-5K3 requires abandoned driveways to be restored to match the surrounding area. This work will require a driveway permit. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for this special permit, or that the board enclose the, include the following condition. Quotations, the applicant shall contain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division and the driveway permit. Hold on, I gotta flip it. Let's see, that was engineering. ConCom has nothing. Health has no issues. And that's what we have, and no letters. Oh, I do have one here. They are in receipt of a driveway permit application to close off the abandoned driveway. That came in yesterday. It will be processed soon. That's from Scott. That's what we have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, I'm Michael Clements, owner of 1305 Sandwich Road. I was born and raised here in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight seeking the board's approval for special permits to construct a detached pole barn in excess of 900 square feet in size and having a total lot coverage by structures more than 20%. This proposed building put the total lot coverage of buildings to just over 20 at 20.43%. And that's all I have. Answer any questions?
Questions for the board? Jerry, I'll start with you. No, no question. Frank?
Couple of questions, Mr. Clements. I noticed that when I did my site visit of the property a couple of days ago, there's another structure or something in the backyard to the south side of the house. Is that a permanence? What is that?
It's just a portable garage. I have a classic car stored in there currently. It's just a tent that comes down.
It's a tent?
Yeah.
So, it can be removed?
It's a portable tent. It's just a tarp with posts that stick together.
Okay, fine, I appreciate that.
Very temporary.
This proposed building is 60 by 40, that's 2,400 square feet. Now, your house, according to the assessors, is 1,724, so you're asking for an accessory structure that's bigger than your house. What are you going to do in there?
I'm going to store my boat. I have a couple jet skis. I have five vehicles. It's just like to have everything stored in there. I've had my jet skis attempted to be stolen a couple times. I caught them on camera, basically to protect my assets.
Are these vehicles registered, or are they, what's the...
They're all registered on the road and fully insured.
All right. Are you intending to do any work in this building, repair work?
No, it's just a storage unit. I work for Hamilton Auto Body here in town.
Yeah.
I have full access to my shop for any repair work.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Uh, no, I, I, oh, I had a question. With abandoning the driveway, does that require him to reconstruct the curb?
Yes.
That might cost you a little. No, if you do as nice a job on this as you did on that old house, you'll be fine, because you really did a nice job on that house.
Thank you.
It was an eyesore.
It was my uncle's home who had passed away, and I was living out of state at the time. It was sitting abandoned for a couple of years.
Yeah, you did a very nice job, and obviously you have enough hobbies to keep you busy.
One more.
I have no, I have no questions and no doubt that you're going to do a nice job.
I'm just going to piggyback on what Mr. Duffy asked. Would you have any objection or problem with a condition that you're not going to use anything in the barn for commercial enterprise?
Oh, no.
I mean, you can do your own, do your own repairs, but you're not going to be turning it into...
No, no, it's strictly personal use only.
Just a concern is that this could be transformed later on into a commercial enterprise or an unlicensed repair shop.
No, I mean, eventually, and that is my dream to one day own my own shop, but not at my personal home.
Thank you, sir.
Are you doing water and electric out there?
Just electric.
No water?
No, there won't be any water. There's no need for it. I have hose bibs on the front of the house, which are right there at the front.
And did the plan show electric on here? It wasn't mentioned. He just said water.
Yeah, it just said water.
Yeah, okay. I would want electric and water if it was me. It's just me. I'm all set.
Oh, interesting project. Had you chatted with anybody about the fence prior to this evening, or?
No.
Okay. Might have to, but that's all I have.
What zone is this in?
I'm sorry, what?
What zone is this, AGA?
AGA.
But you're, now, if I have this wrong, so let me just put this out here, then we can go from there. If this were in the agricultural B, you could actually go to 25% maximum coverage, I think. But have we covered on that? I'm a little confused with it. Are we within that, or?
The total?
The 20.43 over that?
No, 20.43 will be the total.
So, what is the coverage, the building coverage, right, going to be, 20.43?
Yes.
Yes, that's all buildings on the property.
And the maximum lot coverage is 31.8 with the new, with the barn on it?
Correct.
Love barns, by the way, they're great. All right, so I have no questions then.
Any follow-up questions? Public comment? Seeing none.
I have one first question. Mr. Clements, I, looking at your plan.
Yes.
It seems to say that it's going to be, is this going to be a metal building?
The roof and three sides will be metal. The front facing the road will be the same siding and shingling to match the existing home.
So, what will your neighbors be seeing when they look at it?
Trees.
Well, it's a pretty big building. Is it going to be a, when you say metal...
There'll be tall trees on all sides of the property.
When you say metal, it's going to be like, just give us an...
It'll be, it's black. The roof will be black, the walls will be black, the front will be stained wood to match the current building, not my house, sorry.
Okay.
Anything else? Public comment? Seeing none. Board discussion?
I'm good. Go on.
In the driveway issue, I, I applied for the permit and they called for the bond today. They set the bond, so that'll be taken care of shortly.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Second, Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed, no further testimony, we take. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions?
Is there a second? Suzanne, second. Findings?
Findings, it's in an AGA zone, Great Pond overlay, no flood zone. Lot size is 20,186, it's on a public road. For structures right now, a 8.54 over 1926, and existing will be 20.43 over 31E. I'm not good at this, but the height is gonna be 22 of the barn?
Yes.
It's in a, since it's near the base, it's foraging WRPOD, NHSEP, search and rescue, wellhead protection, I mean, it's under, accident protection, prevention, accident prevention zone. I learned something. Never knew that one. Love that one, I learned. It's all, that's all I'm finding? That's, I think, all, no letters? That's all I think I have for, oh, it's 240 61B, 240 113A4. I think that's all I have for findings.
Testimony from the applicant, intends to store five vehicles, jet skis, and a boat. Has no intention of conducting commercial enterprise or a repair shop there. Applicant has indicated that he has been in contact with engineering regarding the abandoned driveway and closing it out, as well as obtaining a new driveway permit and necessary bond. Any additional findings? Conditions?
I think you just mentioned one. He stated his purpose, which I think should be the condition that it will be used for that purpose, where that's not to be used for a home occupation or a home-based service business.
Yep, absolutely.
Doesn't have any room.
Well, this is kinda strange. We have an accessory building that's bigger than the principal building. I don't think we've ever seen that before.
Guy's got more toys than...
Well, I know, but it's...
It is permissible.
I know it's permissible, but it's almost like the building, the house is now accessory to the barn.
Probably gonna spend more time in his garage than he does in his house.
That'll be the case.
Yeah, I guarantee it will be.
See, you're gonna need water.
We can incorporate the engineering comments.
Complete the driveway permit. The curb cut?
Curb cut. The issue of the fence, just condition it that if there's an incursion, he either needs to remove the fence or obtain a license from the town board to select one.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, what about the fence?
The issue of the fence, there was testimony, sir, that the fence may be encroaching into the public way. This happens quite a...
It is.
Yeah, you're in the setback.
This happens quite a bit, so what we require someone to do is they either get a license from the town, it just gives you permission to have the fence in the roadway.
Okay.
Or if they say you need to remove it, unfortunately have to remove it.
Remove it back.
We, yeah, move it. We leave it up to the board.
Yeah, it's a couple feet onto the...
It's just a letter length.
Yeah.
It happens. Any other conditions? No. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you for your time.
Final hearing this evening under new hearings is 02324, Serial 426 T-Ticket Highway, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit for a home occupation spa.
Okay, we have Emily Serial, DL Box 2366, East Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 249.56 of Dakota Falmouth to allow, to allow a home occupation spa. The subject property is 426 T-Ticket Highway in East Falmouth, Mass. And from town boards, the assessors board has no comment, fire department has no comment, planning no comment. Building, no dimensions on rooms, 30% of the dwelling, question mark. Two separate dwellings on lot, appears to be using front dwelling for home occupation. Under Section 249.5A, 30% of the gross floor of the dwelling unit, not a separate unit. That's from building. Engineering, number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of land, public utilities. T-Ticket Highway is a state right of way in this area. Any alterations within the right of way will require permission from Mass DOT. Any connections, alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. No site work is proposed. Two, it isn't clear from the submitted information if these are two distinct connected structures without access between them, or if it's one structure. We defer to the Falmouth Fire Rescue if a second address assignment is necessary if this permit is approved. We defer to the board if this matter should be addressed prior to any approval if a condition is required. Okay, Concom, no comment. Water, no comment. And we have Scott, I mean, Board of Health. I spoke with the applicant. She is eliminating bedrooms in the dwelling to make room for the spa. After my conversation on the spa's activities, it appears that there would be less wastewater generated than if it was a residential use. In quotations, Title V doesn't provide a minimum design flow for spas. Therefore, health doesn't have any issues with this project. And that's what we have. No letters? That's it?
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Emily Serial. I'm applying for a special permit for home occupation, doing a relaxation spa. So the house is 6,000 square foot. We're gonna use the front of the house, it's less than 30%. We're gonna be doing Thai body massage work, basically helping healing people, and also do reflectrology to help immune system. We also do natural knee service, manicure, pedicure, and that's about it. And also do my facial beliefs, that people have attention, muscle aching, and facial problem. And that's about it.
Questions from the board? Tony?
The intended use is yoga massage?
Thai yoga body works, yes.
Will you be selling any products on site?
No.
No products on site. Is this a licensed profession that requires fire department? Does it require?
Require the license. They have to have body work license or a full massage license. So once I got permission from the town hall, the next step, I have to apply for state board come. I also have license already, and all the worker all have license, and then they're gonna come do inspection for the spa, make sure everything is in place.
So for fire, all of that?
Yes.
That's what the town will do. So this is a licensed profession that requires all of that?
They're gonna come every year do inspection for the spa, state board in Boston.
And they, there'll only be one non-family member employee?
Yes.
And you have sufficient parking?
Yes.
Those are all my questions.
Business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 7:30 PM?
7:30. So which just mean the last appointment would take six o'clock, which be provided some people get off of work to use the service, and will be shut down at 7:30. So let's say the last appointment coming at six o'clock, if they wanna do 60 minutes session or 90 minutes, that's the maximum, then we shut down at 7:30.
And then Saturday and Sunday, 9 to 7:30 PM?
Yes.
One thing I think we're gonna have to think through, too, is the sightlines. When you're going to leave your driveway, and you have your hedge line in the front, the abreviated trees?
Yes.
You really kinda have to edge fairly far out there, so I just, you know, as the board has discussion, you do have to, you might have to at least do some trimming of that very first one, so that you can see further down towards where the light is, but I think you have enough parking spaces, and the floor area at the 30% to your point was less than the mass, so I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did the same thing when I was trying to pull out. I was thinking of one of those mirrors. No, seriously, that might be useful in that, where you can see.
Yeah, 'cause it's...
It's a tough pullout when you pull out of there.
Okay.
You know what I mean, those mirrors that people have?
Yes, the mirror?
Yeah.
So the entrance it can see it?
I don't know if it would work. I was just fearing for my life kinda when I was pulling out, but I think this is a good project. My, my one comment, and I don't know if I'm off-base, you should fix your stairs.
Oh, yes, the entrance, redo that also. We're gonna be probably doing that as well, yes.
That's it. Sorry, I went off-base.
No, the hedge. It's all good.
I think trimming the hedge is much preferable to a mirror, but that's just my opinion. But how many customers at any one time do you expect to have?
I would say between three clients, because we only have three workers and go by appointments only.
Okay. You gonna put any signs up?
The signs up will be outside, the name of the company, whatever the town hall provide us, the side of the business, and then maybe inside. We just wanna make sure that they enter through the right location, because we separate at the back, that's where we resident live there, and the front, so we wanna put the spa there, make sure they park and go inside through the right proper door.
The signs inside that doesn't so much concern me is you want people to know where you're located.
Yes, sir.
So you don't have to have a sign out on the street, and you don't have a lot of space out there.
So I was thinking when we cut the bush out a little bit, and I think I spoke to the sign person already, and I had to figure out with her either face this way or the sideways, whatever appropriate, so when people drive by, and they can see the sign. Or when they have an appointment, so they can drive in and go in, they can see the sign outside.
I'm all set. I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm finished, thank you.
May I?
Of course.
One more thing. Just wanna establish, since we don't have an ASB plan of the property, how, I just wanna establish that your baseline square footage you're beginning with for the 30% max is 4,723 square feet of floor space?
Yes.
How did you arrive at that?
Because when I purchased the house, and they do measurement the house, the total of the house is 6,000 square foot, 12 feet.
So where does this 4,723 square feet come from? How does that fit in?
That is the residential area, because what happened, the house was built originally in the front. It was built 1898, and it was 1,277 square foot, based on first floor and second floor, divide them up equally. And then they add additional 4,723 square foot in the back, additional 2,002.
I just wanna establish that as the baseline, 4,723 square feet. 30% of that would be 1,416, so that's the maximum space you can use, but you're only going to use 1,277 square.
Yep, 1,277 square, because I had someone professional came in, measured it from back to back for the whole house.
Do you have ASB plans? Or do you have plans for, that person that came in to measure it?
Yes, he professional, he's, does the electrician, and also do the flooring.
So are there actual plans to, I'm gonna call it, construct this space?
There is a plan, yes, I wrote it down.
You, I've got a, all right, I've got a handwritten?
Yes.
Plan? This is your plan?
Do you have any architectural plans?
Yeah, thank you.
The potential plan. No, I don't have that, but I had professional came in and draw the plan for me.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're keeping the same rooms, right? You're not, no new walls?
No, I'm not reconstruction anything. I keep the way it is, it's traditional for it.
Public comment? Ma'am?
Hello, my name's Kathy Thomas. I directly bought the property at 426, I'm at 414 T-Ticket Highway. Currently, we're a single-family dwelling. I came here tonight to express a few of my concerns over the proposed home business for next door. One is the hours of operation, closing at 7:30 every night in a residence area is, I think, late, and it's later than business hours that are allotted in the town plan for home business. Also questioning, are home businesses allowed to operate seven days a week? That was never, I couldn't find anything that said that is the case. The second thing is parking, which said according to the home occupation regs, parking may not increase by more than two additional vehicles at a time. And on the submitted drawing, there were three spots up front by the business entrance, where if there's only gonna be two additional vehicles, I don't, questioning that as well. On her planned drawing, she wrote that there was handicap accessibility, which is true for the residents in the back, but there is no handicap accessibility for the business in the front, either entrance that she'll be using. Employees, it said family only and one additional, so I'm assuming that's three people?
Three, maximum.
Maximal, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Because we go by appointments only?
Mm-hmm. No, I just wanted to make sure that there was, that was the max.
You have to speak in the microphone.
The signage, it said one sign is allowed not to exceed two square feet. Is that to be attached to the home, or is it separate out in the street? I didn't know, it didn't say, but it just said one sign. Also, my most important one, is I guess some of you have driven there, the sidewalk and exiting the driveway visibility. When exiting, there are very tall hedges that block the view. I feel it's a hazard, and it's an obstruction trying to get out into the road. I almost got run over myself by someone exiting the driveway over a month ago, and instead of stopping and letting me go, 'cause I was the pedestrian with the right of way, he carried on. So I feel it's a hazard, just, you know, the driveway itself. And this is my concerns.
Thank you, thank you. The public comment?
My name's Alex Palliato. I live nine Claudia Lane, directly across the street from that house. I hope this is voted down. Number one, there's not enough parking in that area, and number two, it's accident waiting to happen.
What?
There's an accident waiting to happen, trying to get out of there. I know they're still talking about widening it to 28 in that area. That happens, it's gonna be even worse. If you have three employees, three customers, now you have another three customers that come in, that's nine vehicles in the driveway. That's my vote against...
Any other public comments? All right. Follow-up questions by the board for the applicant?
Well, yeah, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The lady pointed out that the zoning bylaw has a provision that there should be no more than two additional vehicles created by a home occupation, and none should be parked in the front yard, and all your parking's in the front yard. So I gotta ask, how are you gonna address that?
I've been in business for 12 years, 2012, and usually when people come, if that problem, I would suggest, I suggest myself, to eliminate people coming in. Usually when people come, like a couple, or mother and daughter who came, have a problem, they come together, or I just take two at a time, because if we're two parking, because previously, the parking was two cars to three cars in the front, who was living in that house.
Well, if we have a bylaw that says that the home occupation shall not create more than two additional vehicles, I think we have to hold you to it.
Then we just take two people at a time.
And then the question is, were, all your parking's in the front yard, right?
When you pull in, it's called in the front, right? Is that how you consider?
It's front of us.
You saw the pace?
It's half-front, half-side, right? Because it's...
It's mostly, yeah. It's, I don't, yeah. Considered the fronts, if we're the front, or is it the side?
Front of the...
You're right, Frank.
Profile of the house, isn't it?
Yeah, it's close.
All right.
But there's, I mean, it is a fairly long area that can, I think you could park there.
We approve this with conditions, we have to address the parking issue that's set forth in the bylaw. Okay.
Yeah, I don't disagree. The other, regarding your proposed hours of operation, the bylaw doesn't prohibit, it prohibits, it's 7:00 to 7:00 PM, so going to 7:30, I think it's not permissible.
Until 7:00.
Right, they have to, 7:00 to 7:00 PM is what the bylaw allows.
Okay.
And that's seven days a week.
There's nothing about...
If the bylaw allows it, then...
Right.
Blue laws were all struck down.
No, no, I just, so the applicant...
I mean, the hedges of the trees are not, my biggest concern.
Those sightlines are a valid concern.
Can we require them?
And we've had, we've had several...
Chop some of them?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we could, like, for example, when we were talking about that property over on Percival Road, or...
Yeah.
Trotting Park, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
We were concerned about the sightlines over there, and this is almost the same situation.
Same thing, it is.
And I think we just, there should be a minimum sight distance, and they should have to figure out how to prepare, how to provide it.
Yeah.
Chop, chop. What clarification would that mean? It'd have to be submitted by a professional, properly determined sight distance?
Well, I don't know if there is, this is not an intersection, so there's probably...
Yeah.
We had an intersection over there, right?
Right.
So there's, there are standards at intersections. This is not an intersection.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I, I just, you know, we're concerned about sight distance. How do we validate it?
If the trees aren't there.
I think if she took some of the shrubs out on either side.
Two feet, three feet.
And kind of, and I think it could work.
We could ask the applicant, we could require the applicant or you either ask for a continuance to come back with a plan to improve the sightline or I don't know if we can condition it.
I'm not sure if we know what the sightline. I don't know how to condition it right now.
I don't either.
Well, does the engineering department have a, some towns have, and I don't know if we have it, they have a, a rule that says the site cannot be inhibited by shrubbery a distance of whatever that might be. So maybe we have to check with engineering or DPW.
That I believe is at intersection.
Yeah. Everything's so tight in this town, I don't think they've gotten that.
I don't think.
Because we can have fences right on the property line.
The other thing could be, it'd be arbitrary. You say you cut back the hedges three feet near the side.
I'd say five or seven, but you know, I don't know what to correct.
Well, let them come in with a plan.
Good point.
I think that's the best way to handle it.
Or just lop them down and we'll go back again and look. They need to go.
I'm sorry.
You want clarification? I'm sorry.
Come on up if you want to say something.
You need to come up and speak into the microphone.
The trees are in question. They've been in many, many years. And if, when you pull the driveway, we're in the process of trimming them back a little at a time. We don't want to cut them big because they'll die. So the one on the left has been trimmed back a little bit and we're just waiting for, you know, gradually trim them back. And the part, the parking that's there, there's two cars in the garage, there's two cars in the front, and that's the back of the parking lot. The front of the parking lot, you can park six cars there. You can turn around like four doors sedan, no problem.
It's about six to six, six to seven.
Thing is, and again, back to the sight, the sight lines, it's, it's at an intersection, it's a stop red light every, what? A few times on the red light, yellow light, and we are conscious of the pulling, you know, pulling the car. Anybody's bent, you can see it's a little tough. But not cut the tree. We don't want to rip them all down.
Wow.
I don't think you have to rip them all down.
I think we need them.
Not all.
It's up to them.
One or two.
Removal of one or two on need, you know, would go a long way.
Then you lose, you know, you're right on the highway over there. You kind of lose the privacy.
Well, better than losing a life.
So I think that, the two things I think that we need a little more information on unless the board disagrees with me as well is about the parking regarding the, the specific provisions of the bylaw, not to have more than two cars. So we need to see specifically where are people, where are customers going to be parking as well as employees? And then the issue to come back with a proposal regarding.
Sightline.
Sightlines, or how they can improve the sightlines. I think that is, it's been the primary concern of the butters.
I agree, yeah.
We've addressed questions about hours of operation, days of operation. Signs are just, the signed by law, they have to just get permission or anything.
So residential only have two cars will be in the garage. And one employee will be coming to work and one member of family live there. They just have no car. So basically residential who live there will be parked in the garage. So basically, maybe just one car, who, who, one employee come to work. Um, and the rest is all empty. It's just for clients, for the customer. And most likely, I would say about two maximum. Maximum would be three cars. Because I've been in business for a long time.
The bylaw prohibits three cars.
Yes, three cars. Two, three?
We would have to condition two.
Doesn't necessarily prohibit three cars.
Then I have to go by law.
Two.
It says additional cars.
Right.
So if there's one car there already.
Yeah.
Then they're gonna have two more.
Right.
Well, I don't understand where the baseline is. So who establishes that baseline of what currently exists? If you can, if you don't, can't increase it by more than two, where's the baseline that you begin with?
What, you count it by bedrooms?
I don't know that. I don't know what you do. On that particular situation. So you stated you've got, how many cars in that parking area right now?
Two.
So the most you could have would be four. Because you can't increase it more than two additional vehicles. Additional vehicles to what? Additional vehicles to, to what?
Well, so because it's a home occupation, you're allowed to have your home residential vehicles. So that can be whatever they own.
So if they, if she, I'm sorry.
That's a good point, yeah.
So you can't preclude someone who owns multiple vehicles from having those.
Right. And I, and I'm trying to find a way to help you.
It's just two additional.
Is that inclusive of employees?
Additional.
Is that inclusive of customers? Is that?
Well, two additional to the house, right? Okay, the guy before us, he's got five cars all registered.
It's the math though, right?
It's, it's the math.
If there's two in the garage and I can have two more than what I have as a residence, does that mean they can park four additional outside? That's, that's kind of where I'm trying to.
The same thing like Susan. You have daycare, you have your resident parking, you have people, the kids, you know, the car.
Yeah, let's stay with ours.
Come to the chair and direct it at the board, please. Thank you.
Is that right, I guess, Norine? So if they have two in the garage and they can have two more than what they have as a residence, so that means they could park four.
Right.
As long as they have space.
I think the intent with the home occupation is just that there's space for two additional vehicles related to the business. And it doesn't address what is currently at the residence.
Anything that's registered to the address would obviously be.
Yeah.
Allowed.
Right. More than two, two beyond what?
Okay.
So we're looking at a continuance just to have a plan submitted regarding improving sightlines.
Yeah.
I didn't really see a problem with the parking. I, the sightlines bothered me.
Sight did, but I had no problem.
There's enough parking, but it's just how many are allowed.
We can condition that, so I think, alright, so just the issue of standing is gonna be how to improve, or the applicant improve sightlines.
There's a lady back there who ran another comment.
Yes, ma'am. Needs to come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Um, I know you were talking about corners and intersections, but actually Falmouth does have a code, chapter 199, article three, about obstruction of driveways. And that would be an obstruction of driveway with the bushes and all of that.
Well, you can have the police chief order things cut back, but. What's up to the burden on the applicant to show that it's safe?
Definition of obstruction, but I'd like to see. Uh, I'm not a fan of trimming because trimmed things grow back. I mean, removal to allow a little permanent sight line is much preferable. Because I'd like to see it leave here and we know that it's not gonna grow back and become an issue again.
Sure. The applicant has the burden of showing that what they're proposing is safe and appropriate, so.
Do we have clear instructions for the applicant?
Do you understand what we're, we're asking? That we need to show that the sightlines coming in and out of the, the driveway are gonna be safe for an at-home business. We just need you to propose something or address how this is gonna be improved from what it is.
She should also show, show a signage when she comes back.
No, that's.
That's sign, that's not us.
The town regulates.
Town will regulate, okay. She already met with them.
It's a compliance, it's a compliance.
She drives out of her driveway every day. I mean, it should be pretty easy to determine whether it's satisfactory.
Is there a date? So, do you have another question?
Does you have other comments or?
I think if, uh, if this is approved, I don't think she should be allowed to have a business there on a weekend. There's way too much traffic in that area on a weekend to try to get out. And have something there seven days a week, maybe if you're gonna approve it Monday through Friday, but I think you should really think long and hard about weekends.
The problem with home occupations is some people have other jobs, so that's why there's no limitation. I mean, some people's home occupation is only on week. I mean, there are no limitations.
If they, if they, why did 28 like they want to? You know what it's gonna be like trying to pull out of there then?
I don't, uh, well, through you, I don't know if we have the discretion.
No, I believe we do.
So I mean, you, you raise a valid point, but the zoning bylaws, oh, what the zoning bylaws are. You know, for the time, seven to seven was it?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's.
And of course, why, you know, not that I don't agree this could be an issue, but widening 28 is not only gonna affect that house, it's gonna affect every house.
That's right. But you're gonna have another lane there trying to get out.
Go down the line and.
I think it should be thought real hard. I mean, if she wanted a business, she should have gone down more farther. That's my opinion. I've lived there for almost 20 years. I know what the traffic is like there. And it's not a spot to have a business, people in and out all day. That's just not.
We don't have that latitude.
What are we gonna do here?
We're looking at a continuance, I think, to have a, the applicant come back.
Yeah.
Do we have a date?
Do we have a date, Norine?
So I'm assuming that you're just looking for her to draw on a plan what landscaping she's gonna remove?
I'd like to see it done. That way we can go back and look and determine if it's right. I mean, drawing on it, what are we gonna sit there with the plan in our.
Shouldn't do anything before we prove it. Take things down unless we give her the permit. I mean. Yeah.
I think she just presents something.
Presents something. But what, I mean, it doesn't have to be engineered, it's just.
So hand, hand drawn on a plan is sufficient.
With measurements.
Measurements have to be by civil engineer or landscaper.
Well, tape measure. Oh, I, I just.
They got two people, one holds one end, one holds the other. Tape measure.
If they're ready. Well, okay.
Well, I mean, you just wanna be clear what you're expecting so she doesn't come back and say, I'm giving you what you asked for, but.
Well, we're gonna get that beforehand so we can go look for ourselves and determine.
I mean, I would like to see a stellar, we need six feet, but I don't even know what the, we don't have any standards to tell them what to do other than the fact that this is unsafe, which it is. At least come back with a hand drawn plan, whether it's a scale or not, that says, I'm willing, I will take out whatever it is, three feet, four feet. So that's something we can at least go look at and make a decision on.
I would just also ask that whatever, if the submission come in early, if we can forward it to the town engineering department, their input.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Great idea.
As to whether or not it's sufficient or what their opinion is as to what are, in terms of the improvement, or if it, it's just not gonna be.
It's down to our opinion, huh?
I'd prefer to have someone who does that as a engineer, who does it just to say, this is gonna work, Mr. Morse, or it's not.
I agree.
So to your point, Norine, so it would be removal? Is, is that the operative word here?
I don't think trimming is satisfactory.
It's removal.
It's removal.
Yeah, I think it's the first two abreviations and then they'll keep, but anyways, that's.
I mean, as Frank said, it's up to them to come in with a plan and then we can adjust it. If they say trim, we might say no, remove, even though the preference right now may be remove.
Do you have a date, Norine? I'll show you afterwards.
So you have some pretty heavy agendas coming up, but I, I would kind of guess this would be a quick conversation? I don't, I mean, I guess.
You just cursed this, but, okay.
So, yeah, because you, you just, you have some heavy agendas and I don't want to overload, but I also don't want to put this off too long either.
How long for the applicant to get the information back to us? How much needs, two weeks, three weeks?
I'm sorry, excuse me, sir?
How much time do you need to prepare the documents?
Once, how long any time? I can, whatever you request, I'll make it happen. But my time, my time that, my, my target date that, once I got approved on the town hall, um, I have to submit my application to, to state board. And state board take about two, three weeks, could be a month, is how heavy duty busy they are from Boston. They have to come do inspection for the place. And sometimes they come twice a year, three times a year, once a year. But they, I've been in business for 12 years and they come to see me, they check, make sure all, everything's standardized correctly.
We're just talking about the trees.
The tree, oh, the tree. Then I need, I need to know, like, we need to push back, we trim out, then I will call the tree company and.
Well, you don't have to do that. Just determine what you're gonna take out.
Oh, okay.
Show us on paper.
I can do it in a couple of days.
I mean, the key word is take out, remove.
No trimming is, it's not gonna satisfy us.
Something in the next 30 days.
Trim things grow back.
Um, so we could add it on to May 2nd if you think it would be relatively quick.
I don't see how it wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Motion to continue to May 2nd?
Maybe not.
Could you approve subject, could you approve subjects to the trees being done by someone designated in the town so she can get her applicant?
No, we're the one that votes on it. You gotta show us what you're gonna do. We're gonna have to go back and determine whether that's enough.
And I really want engineering to look at it. Like you said, I think that's a good idea.
Two weeks.
The motion, we have a second to continue to May 2nd? Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, continue to May the 2nd.
May 2nd?
Moving on to open meeting agendas, we have minutes of March 7th. We are tabling the minutes of March 14th, 28th, and April 4th. Has everyone had opportunity to review the minutes of March 7th?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Being non, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2024 as published. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I was not present, so I'm not gonna vote on that meeting.
The record will reflect, Mr. Duffy is not voting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved. Our new agenda item, zoning administrator update.
Woo-hoo! Taking away, Norine.
So I'm sure you all want to go home at this point in time, so I'll be quick and brief. Uh, we recently had four administrative approvals. Uh, 125 Worcester Court was, um, an administrative approval to rebuild a deck. They had an existing pool and shed and they were essentially replacing it exactly in kind.
Nine.
Uh, 23 Zell, there was an administrative approval request for an existing screened porch. And they were just request, requesting to install window inserts to protect from weather during the winter time. Apparently they were getting damaged. Uh, 49 Thomas, uh, they were, it's, um, four dwellings within one building. They were removing an outdoor set of stairs and infilling that little piece for decking. And then 199 Davisville was an infill porch on the easterly side of the dwelling, matching the existing setback of the dwelling from the street.
Go, Norine, go.
Good job.
Board discussion?
We'll do that Sun, Saturday morning.
Yep. Board updates.
One question. Do we know who's coming? I'm assuming the select board representatives come in, town manager coming, do you know?
I think just the select board liaison.
Okay. But I think, but is he, uh, no, no, my. We might have invited other people.
Future agenda items, uh, as indicated at one of the earlier hearings, I think we need to, at some point, make a determin, a definitive determination about how we are gonna calculate.
I never went to one of those.
Steps as to whether or not a stone step is going to be considered as part of, as an attached part of dwelling or not, subject setbacks or not, or considered landscaping. Uh, this has come up several times.
I, I could be wrong, but I think that I read it. Someone might have been in the old book or something and it was about attached or detached or, maybe I made that up, maybe I was just.
So I, I think just for the board's edification, there were circumstances in the past where houses were constructed based on the setback requirements. And then once the house was constructed, you need to have an entryway, you need stairs depending on the height. And clearly, I guess what I would say to the board is that the bylaw allows for a four by four landing to exceed the front of the house into the street setback. So if the facade of the house is at 25 feet, you're allowed to have a four by four landing that is closer to the street only and you're still conforming. So the problem came in where people realized, okay, now I need, or I want a bigger landing, I want steps. And you obviously need steps to get into your home. But the sneak around for the bylaw was I can call my steps, uh, a landscape teacher or I'll have it made of a natural material so it, but you can't get into the house without your steps. So I guess what I would say to the board, it's up to you, but think about getting into a house without steps.
We're not, we're not, we're not, we are not, uh, this is not on the agenda this evening, so we can't make any decision.
No, no.
But I would suggest that we add it, and I'll defer to you, Norine, if.
To be discussed.
TBD, and I realize we have some robust agendas coming up here, so, but I think at some point it would only be fair to applicants that we define whether or not this, how we're gonna be viewing this so that people can conform and not have this continue to come up or have someone get rejected.
We need to seek some outside. We need to seek some outside advice.
Sure. Why don't we pick a date, and we can then determine how we're gonna go forward. Noreen, I'll leave that to you, you can, if you can sneak it into an agenda the next...
No problem. In twelve months, yes.
Anybody else have anything for future agenda items? Alright, so we're here on Saturday.
Nine.
At nine, I think everyone's got the sheet for, to bring something, and...
Fruit.
Forget all about it, I planned a full Saturday.
We have breakfast pastry.
One donut. And intimates?
Motion to adjourn, then?
Next meeting is April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, six p.m. at the Lawrence School. Favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we are adjourned at nine minutes after eight.